Just for reference, I will read Section 29, 428, Removal Commissioners. The mayor may remove a commissioner for inefficiency or neglect of duty or misconduct in office, but only after the commissioner has been given a copy of the charges which may be made by the mayor against him and has had an opportunity to be heard in person or by counsel. So I will hand over the rest of the meeting to our attorney, Mr. Downs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. I would like to have the record reflect, if I could please, that Keely Williams and Ruben V. Hill have both tendered letters of resignation. So this proceeding before you does not involve them, and it does only involve Dwayne Roy, Charlene Torterese, and Jen Ley. And Madam Mayor, Members of Council, as the statute that the mayor just read outlines, the process for this afternoon will be to have the individual members called up to address you. I will first ask them if they have received a copy of the charges that were sent to them, and when they acknowledge that they have been, and I am confident that they have been, and I've spoken to a number of the people that are the subject of the removal, but when they acknowledge that they have received a copy of the charges, they will be allowed to make a statement to you. The mayor has suggested, and I agree, it's up to you, but it is my recommendation that everyone be given five minutes to address you. I can keep time like I normally do for petitions and communications like we have at regular council meetings. Once the individual has made their statement, acknowledged the charges, and made their statement, then we will ask them to return to the audience. The next person will do that, and then the third person will do that. And once that is done, then council should simply, there's no evidentiary hearing, there are no witnesses, you could discuss it if you want to, but I would suggest at that point in time that the mayor ask for a motion on the resolution, a motion in a second, and that there will then be a vote on the resolution. If that makes sense. If you have any questions or any problems with that proposed process, please let me know, and you can discuss it now.
Anybody have any?
Okay.
All righty. Let's do alphabetical order, just to make it...
That sounds fine.
...easier. First Commissioner, Jennifer Ley.
I wanted to go first, anyway.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
And, ma'am, I want to ask you, did you receive a copy of the charges that were sent out?
I did.
Okay, thank you. So whenever you are ready, let me get my timer ready.
I don't think we should be timed for salutations.
Fair enough.
Okay. Because I've been practicing, and I think I can do this in about five minutes and 20 seconds.
You will hear the beep when your salutation is over, and the clock will begin.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, we have someone filming in the audience, but I think that's okay.
Filmed twice.
Yeah, right.
May I provide a copy?
Yes, ma'am.
I only brought six copies, I'm sorry. How are you? I'm okay. Hello.
Can you please make sure that we get one of those for the record?
Actually, I brought seven.
Oh, good.
So I won't have a copy of myself, but that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of City Council. I am writing in response to the charges brought against me regarding my removal from the Trinidad Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. While I firmly dispute the allegations, I have made the decision to tender my resignation effective immediately. I made this decision not as an acknowledgement of wrongdoing, but rather as a recognition that the situation surrounding the Trinidad Housing Authority requires attention beyond my role as a commissioner. However, at this time, I need to formally address specific allegations that were listed in documents provided to me by the city attorney. I wholeheartedly dispute the claim that I have failed to carry out my duties as a commissioner for the Trinidad Housing Authority, free of inefficiency, neglect of duty, or misconduct in office as stated. Throughout my tenure, I have diligently fulfilled the responsibilities of my position. I attended all required meetings, actively participated in discussions, and contributed thoughtfully to the decision-making processes that directly affected the operations of the Housing Authority. At no point have I neglected my duties or acted in a way that could be characterized as misconduct. I strongly refute the notion that I have failed in my role and ask that any charges against me be supported by specific verifiable incidents rather than broad unsubstantiated claims. Annual reporting, there were no lapses in reporting. If there were lapses in reporting, they stem from procedural issues with the Trinidad Housing Authority administration and are not indicative of any neglect on my part. In my seven years of service, I was never, let me say that again, I was never asked to personally submit a report to City Council or the mayor, and no concerns regarding these reports were ever brought to my attention until now. Other good grounds, the allegation of other good grounds is vague, unsubstantiated, and misleading. It fails to provide any specific details or examples of alleged misconduct or inefficiency on my part. A fair and transparent process requires clear, concrete accusations that can be addressed and refuted, other than broad, undefined claims. Without supporting evidence, this statement serves only to cast a shadow over my tenure without offering any factual basis for such an accusation. I've been consistently, I've consistently fulfilled my duties with professionalism and integrity. Any grounds for removal should be grounded in verifiable incidences, not ambiguous assertions. I have always approached my responsibilities with professionalism, working alongside my fellow commissioners, the staff, the executive director, in the spirit of cooperation. In fact, I'm proud of the relationships I maintain with the staff and my colleagues, and my commitment to the Housing Authority's mission. I would also like to note that during my tenure as a commissioner, at no point has a City Council member ever attended a Trinidad Housing Authority meeting. Had council members been more actively engaged, any concerns or potential issues could have been addressed in a timely and transparent manner. This lack of involvement from the council raises questions about these baseless charges, as no firsthand observations or feedback from council members were ever provided to me. While it is easy to direct blame at the commissioners, it is important to recognize that the management, oversight, and execution of day-to-day operations fall primarily to the executive director and the staff. I serve in an advisory capacity, providing oversight and support to ensure that the Housing Authority remained aligned with its goals. It is disheartening that these systematic issues are now being used to place the burden of responsibility solely on individual commissioners, without addressing the leadership and structural challenges that played a significant role in the so-called inefficiencies that may have been highlighted. The systematic challenges facing the Housing Authority, they require a comprehensive approach, keeping in mind that rural housing authorities like ours face unique challenges, such as limited access to funding, difficulty in attracting and retaining qualified staff, aging housing infrastructure, and lack of available contractors or vendors for necessary repairs and maintenance. Addressing these multifaceted issues requires not just improved leadership, but also enhanced collaboration with local, state, and federal agencies, along with community stakeholders, to ensure that long-term, sustainable solutions can be implemented.
One minute, ma'am.
We must also recognize the importance of advocating for policy changes and increased funding specifically geared towards the needs of rural housing authorities, which often face constraints that urban counterparts do not. I take pride in the work that I've done during my time as a commissioner with the Housing Authority. I've always acted in good faith. I categorically reject all the allegations that have been levied against me. At no point during my tenure as a commissioner were we informed of any significant issues with the Trinidad Housing Authority that would warrant such drastic action. Had concerns been communicated to the board in a timely and transparent matter, we could have taken appropriate steps to address them. Additionally, as commissioners, we were given very little notice about this hearing today, less than 48 hours, to secure legal representation and prepare a defense against these baseless accusations. This is a lack of due process, the lack of due process suggests hastily reactionary approach rather than a thoughtful, fair assessment. And I'm going to skip down, because I have a few moments left. I am disappointed that the narrative has evolved to the point where blame is being disproportionately placed on the commissioners. I've given my time and my energy to serve this community. I will continue to support its success in other ways, however, I believe it is now in my best interest, in all parties' interests, that I step aside, not because I am at fault, but because this situation ultimately reflects deeper issues that go beyond the scope of my role. My commitment to the Trinidad Housing Authority and its success has never wavered, and I am confident that my record reflects this. I hope that moving forward, the necessary steps will be taken to address the core problems affecting the Housing Authority, and that the focus will shift where it belongs for the benefit of the community. I thank the council for the opportunity to serve Trinidad community, and I remain committed to its success in other capacities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was I over?
No.
I shouldn't have kept going.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Dwayne Roy.
I will have to move another copy.
Mr. Roy, so did you receive a copy of the charges?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. Whenever you're ready, so you two will have five minutes.
Mayor, Members of Council, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come in and talk with you. I would like to, for the record, with Jen's permission, to basically see if I can utilize some of her comments. I do not have a prepared statement. I received the notice yesterday. And I'm here to present my verbal resignation. I've been with the Authority for probably 15 years. I'm taken back, a little bit shocked, you know, that the issues that, and the allegations that you have listed, that you have not, you know, taken the opportunity to voice your concerns at one of our meetings. I believe one of the last meetings that we had someone from the city attending was Mr. Greg Sund, and that was many, many years ago. I don't know where you're getting your information, you know, on everything, I don't know who you're getting from. The board is very aware of what's going on with the local housing here, with the units offline, some of those, I wish we could do things differently, but because of rules, we cannot. You know, we go in after the fact in many cases, we find situations, opens up, you know, a can of worms, sort of like they said in the newspaper, I mean, where we have asbestos and other things that have been delayed, getting these units back online. The Housing Authority has been looking at building new units, selling some existing units that are no longer functional, taking that money, reinvesting. You know, on behalf of myself and the other board members, we put, you know, we put a lot of time and energy into this, you know, and then to blindly get a letter, email, from the city, you know, saying that we're going to be removed, you know, and we're just resign and go away, you know. I've been with this community with a nonprofit, serving about 100 and 200 possibly individuals in the community that are at-risk adults and children. I have a budget of $7 million, I work for board of directors, you know, I've never seen anything like this. I am concerned. I'm not sure I want to be with the Housing Authority anymore. It's a very complicated, you know, program, HUD, it's not something you can just walk into, you know, and pick up, it takes months, if not years, to understand the rules. The scoring, you know, are some of the things that is allegedly jeopardizing, you know, our program HUD. You know, vegetation in the sidewalk, you know, gap is a violation. You have a window that's got a break in the barrier on the double pane, you know, that's a citation. You know, we have 200 units, you know, here in this community, along with Corazon. It's a big task. Some of these projects were built back in the '60s with small cities' money. They had asbestos tiles, you know, they had all kinds of things. Then, you know, there's the unique characteristics that come with some of the people that we rent within these units, they don't take care of them. We can't just go in and say, "You're out of here," you know? There's due process and everything. And, you know, so I just feel that we were not given a fair shake, you know, and I'm disappointed. I do want, in closing, you know, thank you for the opportunity of being appointed to the Housing Authority Board of Directors, and for the time that I've spent there. I've learned a lot, you know, and it's helped me, you know, in my day-to-day work. I also represent three HUD projects that are like the Housing Authority, you know? One of them is Casa Lightway here in Trinidad, the other one is Vista Del Rey, well, it's in Trinidad, and the other one is Bella Vista in Walsenburg. They're all three HUD-funded projects, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Charlene Torterese.
Hello.
And Ms. Torterese, did you receive a copy of the charges as well?
I did, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Whenever you're ready.
All right. Mayor Greco, Members of Council, my name is Charlene Torterese, and I thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. I've served on the Trinidad Housing Board for 10 years, I've been reappointed twice. I moved to Trinidad in 1980, and for the past 44 years, I have dedicated a great part of my life and my career to serving my community. For the past 40 years, I have been part of advocates against domestic assault, I have served at my church, I have served for the Trinidad Housing Authority, and I've served in many other areas through the community over the past 44 years. I am now currently a board member for the Balance Estate, which is through the Colorado Coalition for the Homeless. I've served there for 18 years, and I'm still at that capacity. When I was approached to possibly serve on the Trinidad Housing Authority Board, I thought it would be, I would be a good fit. Since much of the work I do with ADA was dedicated to securing affordable, safe, and stable housing for survivors of domestic violence and sexual violence. The decision to serve on the Trinidad Housing Authority was not taken lightly. I don't take those responsibilities lightly, and I had to assure myself that I would be a good fit, and that I would be able to do what I was asked to be done. Since I have been on the Housing Authority, I have strived to carry out my commitment as a responsible, ethical, and invested commissioner for the Housing Authority. Since becoming a commissioner, I have regularly attended meetings, participated thoughtfully in conversations, discussions, I have helped draft policy, supported the staff, advanced my professional capacity by attending NABRAD trainings, which are specifically to housing authorities. I have been certified in many areas of board commissions. These activities were all volunteer time, on my own time. I have given countless hours to the Trinidad Housing Authority, and I want no recognition for that. I just want you to know that what we do, we don't do it for recognition, we do it because we believe in helping the community, especially those less fortunate, whose housing is out of reach for some. When I received my email letter informing me of the City Council's decision to remove me and others from the board, and the charges that were being levied against me, I was frankly in disbelief. Not only that these accusations were being made, but that you, City of Council, had not taken the effort to meet with the Trinidad Housing Authority commissioners to discuss your concerns. The causes mentioned were vague, and we were given minimal time to address this matter. The roles and responsibilities of a Housing Authority commissioner are to govern the Housing Authority by setting policies, overseeing operations, ensuring financial viability, advocating for affordable housing, and monitoring compliance with federal and local regulations. This is not something I just do for the Housing Authority, this is I do something on a daily basis. For the past four decades, I have been the executive director of a nonprofit, and I have the same challenges, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it is the executive director's responsibility to make sure that the work gets done. I felt very deflated, I didn't want to count today, but I read two letters from both former Housing Authority executive directors, Rosemary Shire and Tanya Valdez, which you were handed out by Jennifer.
One minute, ma'am.
Reading those letters restored my faith in what I do and the spirit of giving that I have. It made me feel that all these years have not been in vain, and that I will continue to help in any way that I can. I am not sure that the Housing Authority is the place where I want to serve, due to the circumstances, but I do know that the people in this room with me have all worked as hard as I have, and will continue to serve the community in the best way that they can. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So I refer to you, Mr. Downs, a couple of legal questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So Dwayne Roy submitted a verbal resignation, is that acceptable?
Well, Mayor, I will tell you, so none of the comments were under oath, and I don't think it would have been appropriate to have them under oath, because this is kind of more argument than it was testimony. So because we have a verbal resignation from both Jen Ley and Dwayne Roy, I would say that council should still go forward with the resolution. But I think it is possible that someone could say, "Well, I said that, but I changed my mind." So for those that we have a letter of resignation for, that is a written letter of resignation, but because we only have a verbal statement not under oath regarding a resignation, I think that the resolution should go forward on all three.
Do I have a word?
Yes, sir.
Just as a matter of record, do you have a hand-submitted letter?
Of resignation, Jennifer. They, I'm trying to read it.
From?
Jennifer Ley.
Oh, okay.
She just handed it to us.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Okay.
That's what you passed out.
Yes.
So then I would say that Jen Ley should also be...
And it is signed and contained to you.
It's a lengthy letter, and I think we should read it, take a minute to read it, to make sure that there is a resignation in there.
Okay.
Is it clearly stated somewhere in here, Jen?
Yes, it is the first paragraph.
Okay.
So that is sufficient, Mayor and Council, so I would say that the resolution should go forward for Dwayne Roy and Charlene Torterese.
Okay. All righty, so I need a vote on the resolution.
May I ask a question? I'm willing, before I leave here, to sign the written resignation.
Okay.
So that is fine, that was Dwayne Roy from the audience, so that's fine, if you're willing, I can have you sign a letter of resignation, Mr. Roy, as soon as we're done here, if that's acceptable.
Maybe move for a recess for a tick.
Sure, sure.
10 minutes enough, Mr. Roy.
Oh, Morgan, I resign.
It has to be written.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's, let's take a break for 10 minutes.
Yeah. Mr. Downs does, uh...
Thank you.